Call to order, please. July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Ohio County Board of Education meetings. Call to order here at six o'clock. All rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Mr. Croft calling in?
I do not believe he is going to come. Yes, sir.
Okay. Before we begin today, I'd like to begin with some sad news. Last week, on the eleventh of July, Susan Criswell passed away. She was a forty-year teacher, Martins Ferry, Willing Central, and she was a really reliable substitute teacher for us. She's married, three sons, Chris, Traver, Brandon, six grandchildren, and I had the privilege of working with her on many occasions. She was a kind and gentle soul, loved children. The family is working on a memoriam with the Ohio County Schools. They will be contacting Dr. Miller to talk about setting something up to remember, and I think that's a great idea. If you don't mind, please, we have a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you. Rest in peace, Susan. Okay, superintendent's information, Dr. Miller.
Yes, I have a couple pieces of information and a special guest here with us this evening. But I'm going to start off with letting the board know that we have, Ms. Shea and others, have just completed eighteen days of teacher content summits. We've just recently wrapped up. The teachers have been analyzing preliminary data, identifying strengths and weaknesses as we prepare to start the school year. Also, I'd like to commend Mr. Wells. He has been writing a series of articles promoting the Ohio County Schools, and Wheeling Park High School on social media, the Ohio County Schools website, and lead news. As a matter of fact, in today's story, WWE President Gordon Gie discussed being impressed by Wheeling Park School graduates and how well-prepared they are for college. So that's quite the accolade for our students and our teachers. Finally, in April, we had the honor of meeting Ohio County Schools Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Shawna Saifried. And we were just notified that Mrs. Shawna Saifried has been selected as a finalist for the West Virginia Teacher of the Year. So before I ask her to come up, I just want to remind you all a little bit about her. Shawna Saifried has been named one of ten finalists for the West Virginia Teacher of the Year. Ms. Saifried is a seventh-grade teacher at Bridge Street Middle School, where she is creative and a passionate educator and always looking for ways to make learning fun for her students. She has a Bachelor of Arts degree in English Education from West Liberty State College and a Master of Arts in Technology Integration from West Liberty University. She's taught for thirteen years and believes connections with her students are the most important aspect of the day. She's rooted in the belief that every student matters and every day matters in the classroom. And just to share with our board, there are several wonderful teachers across the state. So this is a huge honor and a well-deserving honor. But Ms. Saifried is up against the next part of the competition, which I'm sure she's going to be dynamite. The final round consists of a face-to-face interview before a small review committee, where she will be interviewed in July. If selected as the two thousand twenty-three West Virginia Teacher of the Year, she would serve as a spokesperson and representative for the entire teaching profession. She's a wonderful human being who we're very proud to have with us here this evening. So I'd like to introduce to you a finalist for the West Virginia Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Shawna Saifried.
Thank you for this opportunity. For one, when I was named Ohio County Teacher of the Year, I think I was so overwhelmed. I don't think I said anything that evening to anyone. So thank you. This is my second chance at it. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening as well. I want to take a moment and thank my family. My husband, Rob, is here with me, and my son, Aiman, as well. They have been my biggest cheerleaders, not just through this process, but also my career. Just don't ask them how many times I move my classroom around because they will not agree with that statement. Not only am I a product of Ohio County Schools, but I've had the opportunity to work with the most incredible teachers that have poured into me throughout the years. My colleagues and leaders at Bridge Street Middle School and this central office and board believed in me, and that's why I'm standing here today. We know the statement that you are only as good as the people that you are surrounded with, and I am surrounded with colleagues and leaders that make me want to be better every single day because they are so good. A huge thank you to my students. They are my definition of why. They keep me grounded and they remind me every single day of the good that life has to offer. And thank you to this community. The outpouring of support has been really incredible. To tell you that I am grateful would just be an understatement. So I've actually already gone through the interview process, and I'm going to share. Part of the interview process, it was a lot of questions, a lot. It was an incredible experience, though I got to meet a ton of really, really great teachers. And part of it, I got to deliver a speech to the Department of Ed. And so I shortened that version. Fill me if you want to talk, and I'm going to bring that to you today. Thirteen years ago, I began my very first teaching position with a sign hanging on my classroom wall that read, "Every child in your classroom is someone's whole world." I have carried that quote with me to four different classrooms in Ohio County Schools, and it still proudly hangs at Bridge Street Middle School in my classroom. I am standing here in front of you today because I have embodied that statement fiercely, without hesitation, through the hardest of expectations and on the days that I had to remind myself repeatedly of my why. The evening my son was born, I had a whole new level of appreciation to what that statement really meant. Most educators have a similar story to why they are standing in front of a classroom of children. Another teacher inspired their direction into the field. It is a beautiful chain reaction of so many teachers embodying that same statement hanging on my classroom wall. The most impactful moments of my school day actually happen in the hallways. Greeting students, embracing them, and hearing their individual stories. Their stories become part of my stories. I genuinely feel that I get to take part in raising all the children in my classroom. And it has never been lost on me that I have been granted that gift. I am more than just a reading teacher. As educators, we are more than just content-specific teachers. We have an incredible opportunity in front of us to take these small humans and mold them into adults that not just change the community in which we live, but change our world with their kindness to strangers, their ability to apologize in situations that weren't an apology, to lean in and rise in struggles, to not just be a finisher, but a learner in the process, to own who they are as an individual, and to truly change our world by pursuing your own passions with strong visions. I get to do that. We get to do that every single day. It is with so much appreciation and gratitude that I get to take part in the students' overall life. I fully understand what I am tasked to do each day in the classroom and what my colleagues are tasked to do each day as well. Connecting with my students means connecting with my parents. Each year, I intentionally allow opportunities to invite my parents into my classroom. I do this because just as they're raising their child, I'm helping right alongside them. I desire so much to connect with my parents, not just to bridge the gaps in the classroom. We've all heard that, but in life. As a community, parents and teachers should be working together consistently for the better of our society. As educators, our day doesn't simply end when the students leave the building. What we said that day, what we did that day, is carried home with each child. It is carried into the homes in our communities and throughout our state. No other career allows a group of people to have a change in our society quite like teaching does. As educators, our students are our echo. My students are my echo. And as teachers, we get to decide what's echoed. You know, what I've come to realize about that statement hanging on my classroom wall through my years of experience is that it's only partially correct because the students in my classroom truly become my whole world too. We all get to take part in raising this generation of kids. I know that it's a lot of work to be done. It's not a light task that educators hold in their hands, but I do genuinely believe it is the greatest gift given to us. Thank you so much.
All those in favor of teaching the year? I feel a very special connection to this young lady. Her husband, Rob, was one of my fifth graders, and I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Saifried. When she had two of my student teachers, I believe, when I was in West Liberty. And also, when she was a teacher at Woodsdale, I was a substitute principal there and also at Bridge Street. And I've seen her work. It is outstanding. The engagement of her students is through the roof. She is so creative, so stimulating, and everything she said is right on. Very nice. Congratulations. We wish you the best of luck.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I would like to say something before we go to delegations, a couple things, actually. The agenda, as I kind of did some revisions on the agenda. You'll notice on, under Reports, there is a new item for discussions, Academic Update. We will be doing this on a regular basis, at least once a month in probably every meeting, if that sounds accurate. And this is due to State Board Policy two thousand three twenty-two, which requires us to address academics at board meetings. Also, I've moved the Members' Moments for Mission and combined it with Remarks so that the board flows a little easier. And that way, we only have to speak at one time, and that's at the end of the meeting. Okay, delegations. We do have a delegation. I have a copy of the policy here. I'll summarize it briefly. Ohio County Policy two thousand point oh-one. Any citizen can come to the board, and we actually, we welcome them to come to the board to express their concerns. We want them to sign up at least, at least fifteen minutes prior to the meeting, which I think Ms. Nolan did. And the subject matter that she would like to speak on, she has five minutes. She can reserve it for anybody else. It looks like you're by yourself, Ms. Nolan. And if she has anything in writing, we need copies, eight copies for the board. We will not permit personal complaints lodged against school personnel, nor against any person connected with the Ohio County Schools. And I have the distinction of being able to cut you off, but that doesn't happen. If there are multiple speakers, they are just allowed one person to represent them. And we will neither decide nor deliberate after her comments. So at this point, Ms. Darlene Nolan would like to take the podium. She's speaking on safety.
I'm used to having the microphone. Okay. There are several threats to our country today. And I think the threat to our country is also going to be reflected in a threat to our school system. The illegals are invading our country, and that's going to be a burden to our school system. It's going to be a burden to our taxpayers. It's going to be a burden to our classes. No illegals should be allowed to burden our school system. And the other threat that we have is that we are not always given a school choice. We need to have a school choice between charter schools and private schools and public schools. And one of the reasons we need this choice, because it's part of our constitution, is to stop indoctrination, inappropriate books, inappropriate topics, critical race theory, sixteen nineteen project, correct pronouns, gender-affirming, and transgender grooming of our children to manipulate and exploit our children. What happened to Title IX? The rights for females when we did not have perverted males cheating in female competitions and males invading private female bathrooms, dressing rooms, shelters, and showers? We didn't have rapes in our schools' female bathrooms. We don't want drag queens reading to our children. We don't want our children being given sexual advice, medications or puberty blockers, or abortions without parental consent. There are some states who are now allowing twelve-year-olds to have a secret health account so they can be given secret medications, abortion pills. And they're told not to tell your parents that you're getting this secret healthcare account. We don't need to have our children during school hours or after school hours being introduced to special clubs, satanic clubs, or other inappropriate clubs. It is our duty to protect our children from abuse. And to encourage a child to take a hormone blocker or have surgical mutilation, even with parental consent, is child abuse. Most of these victims turn out to be suicidal because it's impossible for them to reach the goal of changing their gender. You cannot change your organs. You cannot change your chromosomes. And the people who are tricked into this often turn out to be suicidal. So that's an unrealistic goal, and we need to protect our children from that because it's just another money-making scheme. Parents are not domestic terrorists just because we want what's best for our children. We want what's natural. We want what's best for our children. And our schools need to return to respecting our students and our parents and our grandparents. We need to have our religious rights respected, our flag, our founding fathers, and our constitution. We need to make civics and true American history required subjects. Parents and grandparents demand more honesty and more transparency in the school system. So let's stop this creeping cancer that's going across our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Do you have written anything for us? Thank you very much. Okay, reports and follow-up action. Letter A under Reports, Wheeling Park High School baseball turf contract, Mr. Jones, and unfortunately, and Mr. Crump. Yes, he is here.
We need to pull that from the agenda. We do not have the AIA contract yet from them. So it should be done before the next meeting, but they were not able to get it to us in time, so.
Thank you. Prevention Resource Officers, PROs, for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I sent everybody the email from Randy Russell with what they would like tweaked from their contract.
I have just a couple questions. I know a lot of this was part of the agreement that we came to last year. So the first one said it's changing quarterly payments at some other frequency, which is fine. Some of them, it calls for twelve months. I'm just looking at this with Mr. Jones, if you have a found on it. So there's only one of the officers that's a full twelve-month.
Eleven months.
Or eleven months.
Mr. Harris from Wheeling Middle, the summer school, yes.
Okay. And then the others are nine months?
Yes.
So does the county prorate their time, like in terms of, are we paying just for nine months then? And then they're picking up the other three months? Or how, you know how that works?
Stephen, but I believe we pay for nine months.
We're going to pay for nine months.
Yes.
And then I was thinking Mr. Croft was going to call in, but the change about not receiving any credit for any grant funding that they might receive, if you all remembered what, how we got to that change in the contract?
I think I have an answer, but I'd rather you check with Mr. Croft when he comes back.
Okay.
But the grant funding has become so minimal that we just don't need it. It's very, if there's any, it's close to zero.
Okay. And then we walk through just what, or how many officers we have at each school, each school's chair and officer?
We currently have at Wheeling Park High School, one Wheeling PD and one Ohio County Sheriff's Department. Tridelfia and Steenrod share one, and that's Wheeling PD. Wheeling Middle School and Ritchie share, and that's one Wheeling PD. Bridge Street and Elm Grove share, one Wheeling PD. Warwood Middle, Warwood Elementary, and West Liberty share, and that's a Ohio County Sheriff's Department. Our Learning Center, our Alternative School in Woodsdale shares a Wheeling PD. Madison has a Ohio County Sheriff's Department, and Middle Creek and Bethlehem share a Ohio County Sheriff's Department.
And some of the thinking behind that sharing was that there were local officers that were close by, such that each of the schools that are sometimes, don't have someone there all the time?
Yes.
Okay, I've got, I get a lot of questions about that, especially in recent times, and it's something I've wondered about when we signed it. Do we need to have one at every single school? Or are we okay sharing because there are other local officers that are very close by?
Yeah, it's a very valid question. And I may add to that, Mr. Jones, that we have stepped up our communication system with the new two ways. Is that the new two ways that we've purchased?
We've had those for a long time. We just bought new ones.
New ones, okay. But that gives us really quick access to other resource officers in the event that we need them. Is that correct?
Yes.
And our local law enforcement officials feel like this is a sufficient number of officers in our schools? That's what they've told us?
I have not had that conversation.
Yeah, I have.
One of the other things, and I've been thinking about this for a long time myself, and I see where you're coming from. And I think the cameras that we have, the new construction with the mantraps, we have stepped up as far as trying to have more secure buildings. And the, God forbid, we don't want to live through anything like they have in Texas or around the United States. So this is a priority with me. Safety's a priority with me, too. As far as, as far as what the coverage we have, I think it's the measure of what we can handle. And because we are a smaller community, we have resources close at hand. That will allow us to keep our kids safe. And again, I can't stress enough, the buildings are becoming more secure. Principals, and I was a principal. One of my tenants was, every door is to be locked all the time. And I had the custodian check it every morning, check every door, sir. He would check every door. So we have to impress that upon our administrators. And we are going to do everything possible to make sure our buildings are secure. Did anybody else have any questions or comment? Is there a motion? I'm sorry, ma'am, no. Is there a motion to have this agreement with our PROs?
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Four-zero. Okay, the bond update, Mr. Jones.
I don't have anything specific tonight unless Mr. Crump has anything you'd like to add. We're just moving along with the same projects, just making progress, nothing earth-shattering again unless Mr. Crump has something you want to share.
No, we're just working to get the schools all back in shape. So a lot going on in the county and a lot of good work to be done. So excited to see things as they finish up and we get ready for school again.
Okay. Anything else on the bond? Okay, academic update, Ms. Shea.
All right. So we thought we'd start our academic update with just a review of our occurrences for the summer and what we've been doing in our extended school year. We have data that we're still going through, but we have some things that we can present tonight. So for our extended school year this year, we had elementary and middle extended school year, high school extended school year, and then we had STEAM and CTE camps. We also had strings and athletic camps as we normally do going on. For our extended school year, this year, we were supported by our summer SOUL grant, as we were last year. And we had ELA sessions in elementary and middle, mathematics sessions, STEM sessions that were, that occurred every day as well for our students, and social emotional sessions such as mindfulness and other activities for our students. We had, we averaged one hundred and ninety students in elementary, and that was pre-K for the fifth grade. And in our middle school, we averaged about ten students. So a little bit different there, but the students who came stayed with us the whole summer. So we do have data, so you have to pre and post-test in summer school so that you can show growth for those students. And our summer school for the past few years has been open to all of our students. And so our numbers have increased. But we should have some data that we can present later on about how our students, their growth over the summer. At Wheeling Park, we had credit recovery. We had online art, online Health One, Health Two, and face-to-face physical education this summer. As far as credit recovery goes, that's some preliminary data that we have right now. We had approximately seventy students in credit recovery, and we had fifty-seven half-credits that were recovered. So that's great news for our students that they were able to do that. And fourteen of those students were able to complete multiple courses during that time period. So again, we'll have more data as we go through that about what we did at the high school for extended school year, but that's some preliminary data that we have right now. We had our STEAM camps and our CTE camps that were well-attended this summer. Robotics has become a big topic for us, and it was our largest-attended elementary and middle school camp. So that's exciting for that program that we have a lot of students who didn't even want to eat lunch every day because they wanted to get back to their robots. And we have Ms. Bishop and Ms. Clatterbuck did a great job with those students. We also have Ms. Traver and Mr. Duck who helped out because we needed extra hands because we had so many students for those camps. So another piece of our STEAM camps this summer is all of the tools that we have in our maker spaces throughout the county. We were able to utilize those this summer. So we had students who were making puzzles on the blow forge and using our cameras to take pictures and then supplement on the E-chains and things like that. So we got a lot of creativity and a lot of use out of our tools this summer. So again, we had one hundred and thirty total students in elementary, ninety-four total students in middle school. And our CTE camps at the high school that are for middle schoolers to, again, expose them to the opportunities that they have. We have twenty-five students who went through that program this summer. So a lot of activities going on for our students. As Dr. Miller mentioned at the beginning, we also had some opportunities for our teachers this summer to really dig into our preliminary data from our general summative assessment, which we will talk about in a later day. But it was really great to just have students all together to be able to work, not only with people in their grade levels, but we also put across our programmatic levels. So we had third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers in the room at the same time, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. And so basically, our premise was that we were going to review our data, look at our strengths, look at where we have challenges in particular standards, not only in one school, but across multiple schools, and really dig in and say, why do we think that's an issue for us? We also took our standard... Uh, we also took our standards and tried to drill them down to skills. So sometimes, you know, standards have a lot of things in them, but as we're moving through our data, we really want to know, uh, you know, what does that look like when, when we're teaching those standards? Um, and we took a look at that from the point of view of if I were a first-year teacher and I'm walking into a classroom and I'm looking at these standards, how can I break that down uh, to help not only our new teachers, but also, um, our teachers who are looking at data, um, you know, where their students might be struggling? Then we looked at resources that we have and strategies that we know are effective uh, across the county in implementing our standards. So, um, there were great conversations. Miss St. Green was part of that, uh, last week. Um, and so again, we looked at ELA, looked at writing, we looked at reading, uh, all of our mathematics pieces. Um, and we have a lot of things that we took from that, um, that we'll be able to carry with us through the year. One of the things that we're doing, um, based on that.
Real, real quick, if I could ask just one question?
Sure.
Was this just a select number of teachers from each grade level?
Um, in, in elementary, yes. Um, and so we had particular teachers, um, who, uh, that we chose based on, uh, data from the IMAs, CIA and GSA across our year. Um, in our middle schools, we brought together all of the teachers who were able to participate in the summer.
Was it just a one-day event?
Three days, three days each.
Mm-hmm.
I think that site's open.
Oh, let's see.
I will add though, they were, they were on task, looking for strategies, finding skills on the computer. It was really, really. Yes. We started the space at the annex, uh, which is very nice, right? Um, so one of the things that we are creating based on our conversations with teachers, um, teachers can't be together all the time, right? And in communication, but, um, we're creating a site so that teachers can go to this site and they, if you're an English teacher, you can click on, you can see if you're a math teacher. This is going to be our preview. Uh, we just started building it today, actually, because our session just ended last week. But you should be able to come here and be able to click on math. And, and what we will have is a page that, um, has all the sections that we teach in math and then all the standards that, um, are aligned to that section. And then you should be able to click on a particular standard. So again, if you're new to teaching that content or if your students are struggling, you're looking for a new strategy, then we should be able to have those pieces that our teachers are using, uh, in their classrooms, right? And we should have sort of a hub where they can go and find that information. And so that's one of the outcomes, uh, from our conversations with our teachers.
So you're having teachers upload like their own strategies so other teachers can get ideas?
Yes, yes. And if someone asks, again, we're drilling down to where we could be, right? So if someone, uh, has a strategy, the box method for division, right? That, that we know is working because our data is telling us that it's working, then maybe we make a video of that and put that on there. And as our teachers are getting together in programmatic meetings, we can, we can talk about that, right? Uh, as we move through our IMAs throughout the year, again, maybe we covered a particular section in our scope and sequence. And when our teachers get together in their grade levels, we can, we can use this as sort of a conversation. What, what is working, what can we put here, right? So that everyone has access to that. So yeah, that's one of the outcomes of the conversations that we had across the summer. So, um, great stuff for students, great stuff for teachers. Any other questions?
I, I have a comment. I was able to come to, uh, the primary grades were working here. And, uh, I could say that they were working diligently on sharing. To answer your question, Ms. Hadrol, they, they were doing an awesome job. And our teachers are to be commended, all of them, for giving their summers of hard work. The other comment that I have, um, it's easy for students to regress over the summer. And, uh, their skills are not sharp and they come back in September in many cases. So what the summer school program does, and this is purely voluntary, is that correct, Ms. Shane? It's a voluntary summer school program. These kids are able to maintain. I think some of the principals have probably recommended, you know, wouldn't be a bad idea for this student to attend or whatever. But this program is an outstanding bridge from the end of school year to the next school year. And, uh, we're doing a fantastic job. That's really awesome.
And just, who knows, again, to all the teachers who.
Yes.
In summer school, that's four pieces of summer, right? That teachers come every day and, and engage students in amazing activities, but also make sure that they're staying on target, right?
Very good. Any other questions for Ms. Shane? Thank you very much. Okay, personnel, Dr. Miller, Ms. Knolpe.
Uh, this is wonderful, um, opportunity that we're going to share our new hires, our new, uh, Ohio County Schools family members and several of those people are here with us this evening. But we are going to start off with Mr. Chalmers Moffitt being recommended for a position as a two-twenty-day assistant principal assigned to Tridelfia Middle School. Effective like tomorrow. Or something like that. Uh, Mr. Moffitt?
Hello, everyone. Uh, I first just want to start by saying, uh, thank you to everyone in Ohio County Schools that, that helped me reach this position. Uh, I truly consider myself to be a unlucky individual that I was born in, got to be born in Wheeling, uh, and grew up in Ohio County Schools and have so many great and wonderful teachers, coaches, mentors that really helped me get to where I'm at. Uh, so I first just want to say thank you to all those people and there's, you know, multiple of those in this room, uh, right now. Uh, and then my second part is I want to say, I'm, I'm so excited to get started and to work with, uh, actually one of those people, with Mr. Andy Seals. Uh, so if you know me, I, I always call him Coach because whenever I was, uh, at Wheeling Park High School, he coached me in baseball and football. So he's one of those mentors that I really looked up to. And I'm very excited to be able to work with him going forward and, you know, make Tridelfia Middle School a place where kids want to come to school, where kids want to learn, where, you know, all these great things like Ms. Shane was talking about with, you know, robotics and all these different opportunities that Ohio County, uh, can deliver. And I'm really excited to get to work with him and all the different people at Tridelfia to make it, uh, a really good school where kids want to come to and have fun and learn.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Moffitt. Who was your supervisor in college?
He, he was actually a very great man. He imparted a lot of wisdom on.
I'm not dead yet, okay? I'm alive here.
Another, another one of his mentors that I'm super lucky that I got.
Let me just tell you something about this young man. He commanded the room, as you can tell. And, uh, when he worked with students, he had a, he had a feel for how to deal with kids. And, uh, he, he went around that room like somebody on a broom, okay? He was just lying around that room helping kids. His knowledge of technology is through the roof. Um, the engaging activities that he did with those kids, I was blown away by. And in nine years, I was, uh, worked at West Liberty University, I can honestly say he was one of my best. So good luck, Chalmers. You're going to do a great job.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Darberl, I also add that, uh, Chalmers was one of my students when I thought my honors, he was a freshman. I sincerely think that he was probably one of the best students I've ever had. And I always squared his paper first, but then I had a key. So I'm excited if, if he's, if he's half as good as the administrators, he was a student, he's going to do outstanding.
Our next person is Abby Bunch, being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day general science teacher assigned to Wheeling Park High School.
You're hiding, just stand close.
I'm totally new to Ohio County Schools. I'm, um, I went to John Marshall, so don't look that at me. I'm then kind of WVU and I spent fifteen years as a petroleum engineer and about two years that I decided to do teaching. And so this will be my first full-time job, um, out of student teaching in a long-term substitute position. So thank you for having me.
Well, glad to have you.
Allison Byrne is being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day county-wide special education multi-category teacher with an endorsement of autism, assigned to Warwood School. She's not here, oh. Lauren Calchetti is being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day instructional support intervention teacher, grades K through eight, assigned to Warwood School. She is not with us. Thank you, Mrs. Knolpe. Marlena Sell is being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day county-wide instrumental and general music teacher, assigned to Bethlehem and Ritchie Elementary School. She is here.
Hi, Abby. Uh, like Abby, I'm from Marshall County, so I went to John Marshall, but I attended West Liberty, definitely need to get a degree there. And I, I also got my master's degree there. So I'm excited to be at two elementary schools and see what I can do with them.
Uh, Carmen Strup is being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day preschool teacher assigned to Warwood School.
Hello. Yeah, a lot of you. Been around a long time. And Chalmers, I had you in preschool. Right, um, I am super excited. I've had my business for a long time and now I'm excited to start teaching in Ohio County Schools. So thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
I have to share with you, um, Carmen and I go back. She was one of the first collaborative universal pre-Ks. So she had creative hands in Warwood School and we would come to her and say, we have more requirements, more requirements, we need more space, more square footage, more this. And she would always come with that exact look on her face right now. Biggest smile, kindest person. You would walk into her center and as the director and owner, she would be working with the kids, working with teachers. So we are, I couldn't be happier to have you here today. Um, next, Dawson Boyd is being recommended for a position as a two-sixty-one-day custodian handyman assigned to Wheeling Park High School.
He's not with us.
Thank you. Patricia Legus is being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day cook server assigned to Wheeling Park High School.
She's not with us.
And Heather Wheatley is being recommended for a position as a two-hundred-day communities and school liaison assigned to Warwood School.
And she is unable to be with us this evening.
All other personnel as presented.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Can, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Sorry. I noticed that, uh, Mr. Moffitt was also on here as the student life coordinator for Wheeling Park High School. I'm just curious about what that looks like, if we can.
He's resigned.
Oh, he's resigned?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, you have a lot of jobs here.
He had a lot of jobs.
Yes, Hadrol, he actually created four vacancies, but except for the, thanks a lot, Chalmers.
Gotcha, I read that wrong. Wow, this is a lot of play. Um, and then can I ask one quick question about the communities and schools? That we hired another person? Um, so that's, each of those people is paid for two years under grant funding? And then what is our, what's the plan after that? Something, are we able to get additional grant funding or will this become part of the general budget?
Uh, Mr. Jones and, uh, Mrs. McLeod and Mrs. Stout are, are part of the countywide team. So, uh, Mr. Jones, you want to?
Correct me. After the two years, I believe it goes to about ten percent that we pay, is that?
Two.
So it's just not fully paid?
Right, it's very minimal for us for what we're hopefully going to do.
For how many, is that like for a longer time after that or?
The longest group so far, they're in year five.
Okay.
So, and they talked to us at our training this week and said that it seems promising to continue.
Okay. So we would, we had, we would have some sort of notice where we should like be taking on the salaries? We'd have a few years out there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hadrol. And also additionally, I think we're looking, filling one more position, correct? I, I can't say enough about that. I think that is outstanding, uh, that we're getting that kind of support. When I was at Wheeling Middle, I had, um, a grant that we had a person in similar capacity and she did a fantastic job down there. This will be really a wonderful thing for our schools to have. Okay, is there any other questions on personnel? Do we have a motion to accept, uh, the personnel as written?
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, four. I'm going to recommend that we go into executive session for West Virginia Code six-nine-eight-four to discuss personnel matter. Motion?
Unmoved.
Second.
All those in favor?